First order of business is pledge allegiance and the flag is presented.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is we have a public hearing for withdrawal of the Ashland School Safety, Security and Facilities Maintenance Trust Fund. So I'll open the public hearing at 6:31. And is there any questions or comments from the public on this public hearing? Anything from the board members?
What are you withdrawing?
That's why we're having the public hearing. We are...
You want to... We are recommending a $60,000 withdrawal to cover the cost of the roof from the... This prior summer was a $120,000 roof. And the... From the trust, which has $155,000 balance. And it was the intent of the board to save each year to cover the costs of the roof. There is unobligated funds that the board will be discussing using as well. And in the process of saving for the next section of the roof, that will be done either the next summer or the summer after.
Any other questions on that? If not, I will close the public hearing at 6:33. And we have a... We need a motion to withdraw the $60,000 from the Ashland School Safety, Security and Facilities Maintenance Trust Fund. A motion to withdraw. Is there a second? Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor? 4-0. Thank you. I'm gonna skip to B. I'm going to appoint a new board member. In your packet, you had one letter from Steve Heath, who willingly volunteered to help us and fill the empty vacancy. Our choices are appoint Steve, which I think would be great, or ask for other volunteers, which we don't need to do. Do you want to make a motion to appoint Steve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Any questions or comments?
I did not receive the packet, so...
All in favor? 4-0. Steve, you're now officially... Patty will swear you in, so you can come up here and enjoy and have fun.
I solemnly and sincerely swear...
Solemnly and sincerely swear.
...and affirm...
Yes.
...that I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
...and impartially...
And impartially...
...discharge and perform all the duties...
Discharge and perform all the duties.
...in coming on me as a member of the Ashland School Board...
And I am going to be as a member of the Ashland School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
...agreeing with the rules and regulations...
Agreeing with the rules and regulations.
...of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
Of this Constitution and the laws of the city of New Hampshire. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty. Welcome aboard, Steve. Welcome aboard. Next item on the list is staff recognition... Recognition, recognition. Wow, it was easy for me to say. Shannon, would you like to do the honors?
Sure.
Mr. Ham, can you come up here, please? I can't be looking at you. Because this is gonna be hard enough. Gary's been here with me all five years, but his term here at Ashland was at least 15. He has worked incredibly hard to get this school in the beautiful condition and to keep it in the beautiful condition that it is in. And we're still kinda mad at him for leaving, but I think he has some adventures ahead and grandchildren and lots of great things happening. And he's got a new recliner for his man cave. So Gary, thank you for everything that you have done for us. Thank you for caring the way that you do and for putting every ounce of your heart and soul into this place. And you will be missed every day, except when you show up and rub it in our face that you're not working and we are. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. Have fun in retirement.
Sure.
Count down the minutes.
Okay, we're gonna cycle back up to minutes.
Good night, Gary.
Thank you.
Regular meeting minutes from June 6, 2017. Is there any corrections or adjustments being made? Take a motion? Renee? Second? Yep. All in favor?
I have not had a chance to. I'm sorry I was standing.
That's fine. Maybe you want to stand too. So 3-0-2. Thank you. And then I want to come back up to A. As part of the conversation, I just wanted to get Steve sworn in and Gary taken care of. Trish has some more information that goes along with A for us.
Thank you. We have done some additional work on the books since our last meeting. And if we closed the books today, we feel pretty certain that we would have approximately of 114,504 unobligated funds. We had estimated a $30,000 fund balance for the 2017 tax rate. And we also have $32,355 in excess revenues, primarily due to Medicaid reimbursements. Since we last discussed the fund balance and we encumbered money forward for the summer projects, we'd had that positive swing of about $55,000. $13,000 of that came from legal fees. About $19,000 came from special education. That became unencumbered. And about $7,400 from co-curricular. So that's where that money came from. If we put $60,000 of that unobligated money towards the roof, then the $60,000 for the withdrawal from the EFT will cover the total cost of the roof of $120,000. If we... The board so chooses, they could retain fund balance. My recommendation would be $30,000 to offset the 2018 tax rate. So it would be the 1819 school year to help us defray the costs of next year's tight budget. And that would leave about $24,000 additional to offset the 2017 tax rate for a total of $86,859. Round about. So that's $56,000 more than we had anticipated. And a lot of that was due to changes in the special education population predominantly and from the decision from the Withdrawal Study Committee. We had encumbered a lot of money for those potential legal fees that are not going to happen.
Everybody follow all those numbers?
I'm sorry. Sometimes I go fast, so...
It's okay. Was everybody okay with that plan? I think we're gonna need a motion, though.
We'd need a motion to encumber the $60,000 for the roof. And I would like a motion from the board to retain $30,000 of fund balance for the 1819 budget.
Do you want those in separate motions?
You can do it in one. It's fine.
I can't remember it all, but I'll move.
What I said?
Yes.
So move, like I said. Is there a second? Is there any other discussion on those? Any questions for Trish or on the numbers? If not, all in favor? 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Trish. Next item is privilege of the floor. David, you're the entire floor tonight. So do you have anything? Communications? Any communications? Seeing nothing. Administrative report, principals' report. Shannon?
Thank you. I have first an enrollment report, just so that you can see where the numbers stand now. It'll give you an idea of kindergarten enrollment and kind of the ebb and flow over the summer of where we are at. I think at the end of the school year, we were at 167. We've had students transfer and we've had new students enroll. In fact, last week, in about eight minutes, 10 minutes, we had eight new students come. Two families. Seven students, two families. So, you know, this is kind of how it happens over the summer, but we just wanted to give you the most accurate numbers that we could. So there are currently 22 enrolled in kindergarten, just so that you can have that kind of in your mind. Well, see, usually the week before school starts or even the first week of school, we have a little bit of a bump too. But we're trying to really try to get all of that done before that... Before school year starts, encouraging people to come in now instead of waiting. So I thought you would be interested in seeing that.
Shannon, is one of the intermediate teachers from last year going back down to primary?
Yes.
Because of the bigger numbers down there?
Yes. We're having two kindergarten teachers...
The big class went up to middle school.
The big class went up to the middle school. So two kindergarten teachers and then three teachers outside of kindergarten within primary. We're just trying to keep an eye on the numbers and keep the class sizes working. So, you know, I don't have a formal presentation report for you because it's summer and it's been a really busy summer. But I just thought I would give you some updates on some things that we've been talking about and kind of let you know where we're at. Summer Blast, our summer program, is wrapping up this week. Been a pretty successful summer. We've had some struggles with the bus company to, you know, connect the dots with them and make sure that they are picking up the right kids and things like that. But we've worked really well with them, I think. They're ironing out some of their kind of issues there. So that's been a good idea. It's been a great idea to actually have the bus go pick kids up. It just ensures that they're with us. So our summer custodial crew's been working their hearts out to get the building ready. You can see how shiny the floors are. And, you know, they systematically have a great process to go through each classroom. And they're in it every day, you know, as soon as they can, nice and early, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, trying to beat the heat. And we have some building projects that have been going on. And so many of the things have already been ticked off the list, which has been fantastic. I'm in the process right now of planning teacher workshop days. I have to kind of balance them between the refreshers that they need, the new trainings, classroom prep time, and also getting in some teamwork and collaboration. I'll have a data report for you that includes smarter balance and end-of-year NELA scores. That will be at the September meeting. During teacher workshop days, we're middle tier are going to work on some type of academic recognition for middle-tier students. We'll be using Epiphany software this year. And as soon as we are in the program and comfortable with it and are using it to its fullest potential, parents will be able to access that. And that, I believe, will be able to allow parents to see the learning progressions in each of the grades and each of the content areas, which would be really helpful, kind of a bigger picture. Our two new staff members, Sarah Yulman and Ken Balu, are gonna have two great mentors. Brian Jones is gonna be working with Sarah and Teresa Merrifield with Ken. All of our PARAs are now PARA II certified with the state, which is fantastic. Our Title I school-wide plan has already received preliminary approval. We have a meeting to try to get some people together to review it one last time before we submit for the final with our Title I grant plan. Our Title I grant came in a little bit higher than expected, and so we are exploring the possibilities of maybe adding a part-time para to also help out in classrooms, which would be awesome. Let's see, we have some teachers attending an Intralake Math intensive with Mahasharma in August. We're also gonna do a two-day in-house workshop with our teachers right here, which is gonna be a super help to kind of get them ready for the school year. Our technology leasing, I want to just give you an update. Fiber has been in the building and working since the 1st of July. It is super fast and really reliable. We haven't had any issues with that. And they actually told Lester that this was the easiest transition or transformation they've had in any building because we were just... Lester worked really hard to have it set up and ready to go. So that's been great. All of the leased computers that we have, the leases are running out. Those will be shipped out at the end of August. The new server is here. Lester was able to get one new server, lease that, and it's replacing two of the old servers. So the replacement computers are in route this week. Some have already gotten here. And the new leased equipment costs approximately $4,500 less than what we have been paying. So that's really great. Playground installation, we're struggling to make that happen because of some, you know, issues with coordinating people who have offered to do it and volunteers that would like to help as well and kind of what is required as far as having that done safely and adequately. So we're still working on that. Staff are working on... They had the choice between four different books to read in preparation for our first day back. And so I just wanted to share a little bit about these books with you. And if you are interested in choosing any one of those books to read as well, they're based on kind of things that we are working on in the school year, you know, dealing with students who have had trauma in their lives and how students who've gone through traumatic experiences learn differently. They think differently, they're wired differently, and kind of responding to that need in our community of students that have significant trauma and how do we help them be best able to learn. We've also had some books in here about boosting your creativity and transforming your life as an educator. Teach Like a Pirate, it's a really fun book. About changing your mindset and transforming your teaching, An Innovator's Mindset. So the teachers have chosen one of the four books and they will be put into... They're reading the books when they arrive. We'll get them to them. And then we're gonna talk about them during the first teacher workshop day as kind of a kickoff to the school year, which is really kind of a great way to have people kind of have those common conversations and get excited about what's gonna happen. Our teacher workshop days begin October 22, 23, and 24. And then the first day of school is August 28. And I can't wait to have the kids back in the building.
August 22, 23, and 24.
Those are teacher workshop days.
You said October.
You said October.
I said October? No, sorry, not October. Yeah, we're just gonna have kids not... Sorry about that. No, August. August. Yeah, I can't wait to get the kids back. It's way too quiet. So much more fun on your hair. Mary, do you want to do the schedule stuff now?
That would be great if you wanted to share that as well.
Okay, sure. I thought you guys would appreciate being able to see kind of an overview of how our schedule works between the three tiers with the shared staff and what the academic blocks are. And then I kind of have two support documents so that you can see. So this three-column document lays out the primary, intermediate, and middle tier, kind of their school day, in blocks of time. And then this colored one is the middle school master schedule because the middle school operates a little bit differently. So you can see that the primary and intermediate tier have two big academic blocks of time before and after their lunch and recess. Specials are in there. In the intermediate, they're in the morning. And for primary, they're in the afternoon. Middle-tier students have academic blocks on either side as well. They start out with an advisory, two days a week, or a morning meeting the opposite three days. And in looking at academic time, I just kind of made an overview that would make it easy for you to see without having to calculate that. But you will get total instructional time at each of the levels. So you can see that they're all about the same amount of time. Middle school has more time. And that really comes from the choice of middle school teachers at the end of the year talking about... And we had a comparison of some SAU 48 schools and what... How many academic minutes they had during the day. And we had less... We have fewer academic minutes than some of the other SAU 48 schools. Not all of them, but some. And so when I shared that with the middle school team, they were really... I mean, they wanted to start the school day earlier for middle school kids. And I said, "We can't jump into that. Let's ease into this maybe a little bit first." So they actually decided that they would cut their advisory down and gain time that way. And we also took out another... We had a more flexible block in there that had academic, but it also had some other things. It just gave us some opportunity there to be more flexible. But they decided that they wanted to really make sure we had enough academic time, which is fantastic. And, you know, they made that choice as we were looking at the numbers and comparing our school day and how we're really most effectively using that time with the kids. So they got a little bit of a boost. But, I mean, you know, really, our day and when we start, you know, other schools were off in either the start or the end time by enough that it really, over the course of a year, accumulates. So seeing it laid out like that was really good for the teachers to kind of get a handle on that. But they would definitely entertain the idea of thinking about starting the day even 15 minutes earlier for the middle school kids and getting it out, having a little more time. But I said, "Let's start with this, and then we'll say what we have to do to think about even doing something like that."
So actually, by the New Hampshire administrative rules, the board is actually supposed to approve instructional... The instructional schedule. So I'm not sure if you feel comfortable doing that this evening. We didn't have it on as a motion. You can certainly do it in September if you want time to look over this and think about it. But it is something we need to do annually.
It's the board's privilege, which way we like to go. I don't think we're gonna change it. I think we'll do it. I take a motion to adopt it. I wanted to make the motion. Renee? So Renee, the motion to adopt the schedule, academic schedule, correct? And Deb seconded. Any other discussions? If not, all in favor? 5-0. Thank you.
And Shannon, I think you were going to also just share about some teaming pieces.
Sure.
That would be helpful.
So we talked about, at the end of the year, we always get the different tiers together. And we talk about, you know, what worked, what didn't, what were some struggles. And, you know, not uncommon in elementary education is that transition from second to third grade. It's just a really big mindset shift. The intermediate tier or that third-grade team is really always looking for the kids to be more independent. And they're used to having some pretty rigid structure in primary in that second grade. So that's a really difficult transition for kids. So knowing that physically, even though we were having another primary teacher, that there's not enough physical classroom space down in our wing, that one of the teachers would have to be up in this area, really. And that Brian Jones has always been the one that kind of taught those... The kids that are accelerated or moving a little bit faster, that it would be a great thing to put Brian up in this area where we would physically have to be, but also to team him up with our new intermediate third-grade teacher, who is Sarah Yulman, who will... This is her very first classroom. So, you know, there isn't a better classroom manager in our school than Brian Jones. There isn't a better person to create relationships with students and be such a tremendously positive, you know, mentor for Sarah. So having Brian, we looked at the numbers and we looked at the kids and where they are developmentally and split up that second-grade group so that Brian would have a part of them and then Sarah would have the third-grade students and that the two of them are going to co-teach together and work with those kids. And so no longer are the kids, even in with Brian and Sarah, but also with Mary Lambert and Annie Welch and with Gail Spears and Crystal Tower, in that teaming, co-teaching model, no longer do the kids need to leave... You know, maybe they have Mrs. Spears for math and then they have Mr. Jones for literacy. They don't have to do that anymore. They're staying in that classroom, self-contained with the teachers. The teachers are gonna build a community and a team culture and are going to really be able to use the data of these adaptive programs that we're using to tailor instruction every day for kids and really pinpoint and kind of take the noise away of like all the other things. And like, "I'm looking at the data and I'm making it actionable. This is what this student needs. This is what this student needs." And really working together as a teaching team to get kids what they need. So I'm really looking forward to it. And that's one of the reasons we're having the teachers come in for a two-day training because we're really gonna dig into like the process of that. They understand the concept of it. But really, you know, most people are process-oriented. So we're gonna do a lot of work with data, analyzing that data, making it actionable, practicing that, and how are we gonna build these team cultures in our classrooms? So I'm really looking forward to that. It's gonna be a hugely powerful process. And actually, this comes from kind of the work that I did for my dissertation, the case study that I did of the school in the Midwest that has... Is a next-generation learning model and their co-teaching team process. Their results have... Are just head and shoulders above the rest of the schools in the district. And even their state report card scores are unbelievable. So I'm really looking forward to having the teachers see on a much more routine basis, student growth, as opposed to, "We're gonna test them in December, and so we're hoping that in December, we're gonna see some growth and then we're gonna test them again in June or whatever." That they're, because they're using this data every day, every couple of days, they're analyzing that data, that they're going to see that growth and they're going to be able to accelerate that growth much more rapidly than when, you know, your measurement, your kind of your external measurement is so far in the future that it's hard to, you know, keep things moving forward. So that's our plan. And it also helps, honestly, when, you know, here we have a difficult time getting enough subs. So when you have a team teaching model like this, if there's a teacher that's absent and you get a sub or you don't get a sub or, you know, you've still got that consistency of having the teacher in the classroom with the kids. So that's gonna be really powerful in maintaining that, you know, expectation in the classroom and keeping the learning moving forward and not having that impact the kids.
Awesome.
Very exciting. They're very excited about it. So it's gonna be great. It'll be good.
Anything else?
Nope.
If you weren't here earlier... Now, if you weren't here earlier, it's Dr. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Shannon.
Well done.
Thank you. Administrative report, New Hampshire DOE report, determination of implementation of ID grant for 1516.
I'm happy to report that thanks to the hard work of the special education staff, classroom teachers, and the SAU office, we have met the requirements and purposes of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act for the 2015-2016 year. We received the purpose.
Awesome. Good job. Next item is business to board. Nomination of professional staff.
So you have in your packet two individuals, which Shannon has already mentioned. Through the authority that you provided me over the summer, I was able to hire them. But certainly, that means an official election by the board. And that is for Mr. Balu and Ms. Yulman, if I indicated their names correctly. And meeting both of them, really delightful individuals. And we're really fortunate to have them joining. They're young professionals, but they are eager and they have a lot of creativity. And their commitment to really wanna serve kids well is certainly apparent. So I think it's very exciting. It's exciting to have them be nurtured by the staff here to help them go.
Take a motion. Deb, is there a second? Steve?
And I did just want to mention, although it doesn't require board action,
And I did just want to mention, although it doesn't require board action, Tim Pocat will be hired as the maintenance manager, or has been hired as the maintenance manager. He is starting, I believe it is the fourteenth of August. So that is a couple of weeks away, but we are excited to have him joining the team. And I know that, you know, he certainly will continue Mr. Ham's good work.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, five-zero. Thank you. Business superintendent, general operating expenses.
Yes, I believe you received by email and through hard mail the manifests from Mary Buck for the meeting tonight, manifest two thousand and two and two thousand and three.
I did receive that.
Okay.
Is there any questions on the manifest?
Must have left it home, but I did read it. It's just that I didn't get the field packet. Yeah, I read it. I'm fine.
Is there any questions on the manifest? If not, I'll take a motion. Deb?
I'll second.
Nothing else, all in favor?
I wanted to give.
Four in your standing. Four zero one.
I think Ms. Temperino wants to give you an additional update as well.
Just real quickly, I wanted to give you an update on the summer projects that we've been doing that Mrs. Bartlett alluded to as well. The gym LED lights are completed. The exhaust fans and the new movers are completed in the gym as well. The old rooftop unit cupola on top of the gym will be removed and re-roofed over in the next week. The new entryways will be installed next week, starting on Tuesday, and we anticipate completion by Friday for those new doors and windows and the entryways. The entryway flooring will be completed after that installation. And the facilities committee is scheduled to meet on August seventeenth at seven-thirty to review the summer projects and review, start reviewing for the upcoming budget season. And the doorknobs are in process, according to Mr. Han. I spoke to him a little bit earlier and they will be completed by the eighteenth of August. I just wanted to give you that update after your approval last month.
Thank you. Next item is draft memorandum of understanding Ashland School District and SAU 48.
So I wanted to share with you the draft memorandum of understanding. I've had only preliminary contact with Superintendent Halloran from 48, although it was certainly in support of it and that most of this is reflective of what we currently do. One area that I think would require further conversation is the section about ability to access courses at Plymouth Regional High School. Some of the pieces I've put in as the draft are things that they don't currently even do within 48. So that would be an area that we'd want to, you know, certainly have more dialogue about. But I wanted to see, get the board's thoughts or insights into this concept and if there are any suggestions that you have. I think it's just a nice way to start formalizing what, you know, most of our practices are.
Oh, yeah. I think it's great. We have another meeting coming up end of August.
And the withdrawal study committee will have a draft report at the end of August of kind of summarizing the withdrawal study process. And I hope to try to schedule a time to actually sit with Mr. Halloran just to go over it in person. And then I think if there are no real suggestions of edits, we can certainly try to start formalizing signatures and that process.
They can move forward and start formalizing.
Yeah.
Yep, now it looks good.
Shannon, have you read a chance to review it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Almost everything that's on here is already in place to some extent. I mean, really, I think we have improved the communication between the school and our connections with, you know, them on a much broader scope over the past few years. So that's been really helpful.
And I think the idea behind formalizing it was just if administrations change, people change, it just will continue.
Yep. At least the next knows what's going on.
Sure.
Helen, it just helps give you a point, you know, a third point to look at if there are issues that are coming up, you know, is there something we're not following? Can we improve that?
Yep, absolutely. That's good. Thank you. So the next thing is, do we want to do them all at once for the third reading and then pick the seconds and the firsts? So we have policies for third reading, we have three of them. Policy twelve-twenty, advisory committee. Policy nine-one-one-one dot one, method of election. And policy nine-one-one-one dot three, resignation, which is the third and final reading of those policies. I'll take a motion to approve all three policies as presented.
Make a motion.
Deb?
My second.
Renee? Any questions or comments on those? If not, all in favor, four zero one. Policy second reading, policy thirteen thirty-one, use of possession of tobacco products banned in and on school ground, facilities and grounds, there it is. It's all we discussed about tonight, having ramifications. This is the second reading of this, take a motion to approve that if there's no other changes or corrections needed.
Tom.
Renee, Sandra seconding. Anything else? If not, all in favor, four zero one. Policy thirteen sixty, fundraising activities. Any changes on that? If not, I'll take a motion. Sandra, second. All in favor, four zero one. Policy four-one-three-one, support staff, professional learning. I'll take a motion on that if there's nothing else that needs to be adjusted. Renee?
Sorry.
That's it. Second, Deb? All in favor, four zero one. Policy four-one-five-four, substitute teachers, take a motion to approve. Renee? Sandra second. All in favor, four zero one. Policy nine-one-one-one, qualifications, take a motion to approve. Renee? Second. All in favor, four zero one. Policy nine-one-one-one dot four, removal from office, take a motion to approve. Renee? Second. All in favor, four zero one. And the next ones are first readings, so if there's anything, just holler out. First reading of policy one-one-three-one, strong family and community partnership. Does anybody see anything in that? If not, I'll take a motion to approve. Renee? Second. Nothing else, all in favor, four zero one. First reading of policy thirteen fourteen, public gifts, donations. Does anybody see anything in that? If not, I'll take a motion to approve. Renee? Need a second. Deb? Anything else? If not, all in favor, four zero one. First reading of policy five-one-four-three, use of restraint and seclusion. Does anybody see anything in that? If not, I'll take a motion. Renee? Second. Deb? Anything else? If not, all in favor.
I'm going to abstain from that.
Okay. Vote is three, zero, two. That's it for now, we've got a lot coming to you. Unfinished business, is there any unfinished business with the group or?
I just, I did bring copies of the collective bargaining agreement just for the board to have. Thank you, Chuck.
Do we know on the vote that meetings are going to start?
We've not been contacted yet. Usually traditionally, there's a letter that comes requesting that has not been received. Sometimes summer creates a little bit of a lag.
Come, do we want to put together a meeting before the letter?
Typically, we wait for the letter, so it's been my practice. Certainly, I think maybe once when people get back from vacation, if we haven't received something, we can certainly connect at that point. Now that the calendar has officially turned to August first, people's mindsets begin changing.
Focus, teams start showing back up.
Yes.
TSU's already starting to, the kids, some of the kids are already there.
Yeah, so it does have a bit of a shift.
Yep. Any other unfinished business? No? Privilege of the four two, David, second opportunity. Nothing? Announcements, withdrawal study committee meeting Tuesday, August twenty-ninth of this year, six PM here in the media center. Ashland Regular School Board, there was a change Tuesday, September fifth at six-thirty. There will be policy meeting at five-thirty. Originally, I couldn't make it, but I can make it now. So there will be policy at five-thirty. Do we have any need for non-public?
Can I just confirm one thing that I just, has she indicated she's okay with that being shared?
I did ask her if you could share. People know. But I just didn't know if it needed to be.
If we could go into non-public, that would be helpful under personnel.
Okay, so we will have a need for non-public under personnel tonight. Is there anything else before we go into non-public? If not, I'll take a motion to go into non-public for personnel today. A second. Deb?